Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock, so it's time for the September City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting, and I will officially call it to order. Ms. Melissa, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Plumbow?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here.
And before we even get any further, I'd like to welcome our newest member is Laura Plumbow. This is her first meeting, so we promised to be gentle with her, and I promised her I wouldn't call on her first. But we're really pleased to have back to five members now, and looking forward to working with you. So, with that agenda, any additions, corrections, or changes to the agenda? We're good for that?
As you can see on the agenda, there was one case, Seven Brew, that was tabled. The applicant requested tabling, so we would recommend that you table that application when we get to it, or you can do it now.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you very much. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Aye, second.
Don't fight over it, guys. Okay, I have a motion in a second. We'll do that by general consensus.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Minutes from August 6th. Any additions, corrections, changes, gentlemen? Ms. Plumbow?
None.
Okay, seeing none, I ask for a motion, please, to approve as written.
Motion to approve the 6th August Planning Commission meeting minutes as noted.
Mr. Chad, second.
And we'll do that by general consensus?
Agreed.
With Ms. Plumbow abstaining because she wasn't here. So it was, that would be by four with one abstention. Okay, tonight we have, on the agenda, we have three public hearings, and as you heard, one of them is, the applicant has asked for a tabling till next month, and we'll vote on that when we get to it. But the first one is PUD 88-18, mod 825.
This is case number PUD 88-18, mod 825, on an application filed by Paula Hubert, 8600 West Bren Mauer Avenue, Suite 800 N, Chicago, Illinois, 60631. The applicant requests a major modification to allow for the construction of a 7,105 square foot restaurant on 2.02 acres. The property is located at 2799 Center Drive, further described as Book Four, Page Two, Parcel 11, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. For those of you who are in the audience, the way we do our public hearings is, first the applicant gives us a presentation, then we ask for staff report. Once that's finished, we'll ask for any public input, and we ask you to limit that to three minutes, if you would. Once everybody has had their chance to speak, we'll see if there's any, or any written input that came in after the announcement. Then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn to our folks for discussion and a vote. So without further ado, I presume there is someone here representing Bubba's 33? That would be you. Step right on up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Paula Hubert. I work for Greenberg Farrow, and I'm here on behalf of Bubba's 33. I have a very short, I wanted to hit on highlights for the project. I know Randy and Colin will have a complete presentation, but if you're not familiar with Bubba's 33, I wanted to just talk about that a bit, and highlight that it's going to be a moderately priced casual dining experience, scratch-made food for all, burgers, pizza, wings, really something for everyone. You're gonna have a lot of good beverages, cold beer, fun atmosphere, and if you haven't been to a Bubba's, great food and scratch-made. The restaurant will be open for lunch and dinner, and the operations team is really looking forward to welcoming the community to this new location. I do want to highlight, too, that I worked very closely, our team worked closely with Randy and Colin. We made some improvements on the site plan, the parking, increased some landscaping. Do want to highlight on the building elevations, we increased the masonry that we have, really looking at a cohesive design on all four elevations. And so I do want to thank them for the time and input, and really, I think our team brought together a really great site plan and elevations to go with that. I do want to highlight, too, you'll see in the supplemental documents, parking is key for this restaurant. Everyone loves, I don't know if you're familiar with Texas Roadhouse? They love Texas Roadhouse, they love Bubba's. It's gonna be crowded, and so the parking you see here, it is over what the minimum requirement is for the site, but it's right about where, you know, where Bubba's wants to be for the site, and it's really key to have that parking as part of this project. So that's really concludes the highlights I wanted to share with you all, but happy to respond to any questions or discussion points later in the evening following the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff?
My name is Colin Carful. I'm the city planner here. Once again, we are here for the Bubba's 33 application. They are requesting a major modification to PUD 88-18 to allow for the construction of a 7,105 square foot restaurant on 2.02 acres. That project is located at 2799 Center Drive. Just to get our bearings here, that Southern Star is kind of where we're at here this evening. That's our government office. To the northeast of us is where that new Bubba's 33's location will be going, just a little northeast of the main mall at Fairfield Commons. Here's a look of the existing site layout. This was home to a TGI Fridays. That has been vacant for some time now. So the proposed application is actually proposing a complete tear-down and rebuild to support this new Bubba's 33 restaurant. That previous TGI Fridays was 6,500 square feet, so just a slight uptick in square footage for this new restaurant here, as well as more parking spaces will be allowed. The surrounding zoning is very compatible. There's a skyline to the east. There's Giordano's Pizza to the north. North Fairfield Road is obviously, there's no access to North Fairfield Road, but that's kind of the main boundary to the west. And to the south, there's just a variety of retail stores there, and a restaurant is compatible with that. Here's a first look at the site plan layout. Like I said, it's a lot of, large emphasis on the parking to support, you know, a restaurant that is expected to be well traversed and well populated. But that's, like I said, the first look at the restaurant. As you can see, there's full ingress egress to the north and south locations that kind of feeds into Center Drive there, and then there's a one-way exit kind of in the middle of that development, just kind of improving circulation. As you can see from the previous old location, there was, there wasn't full access on both sides, so a little bit better placement for this building here will allow for a little better circulation throughout the whole development there. As the applicant referenced, we went a lot of back and forth with the building design. We're really happy with the end result. Previous iterations were a lot more kind of fiber cement clad on a facade, but now we have a good mix of brick and mortar, and as well as kind of that fiber cement as well. So we're really happy with the end result. Like I mentioned, the materials are face brick, fiber cement, metal canopies, accent banding, et cetera. So that's just kind of the look at the front elevation. I believe that will be from the North Fairfield, visible from the North Fairfield side. Here's a look at all of the elevations as well. As you can see, that kind of brick kind of wraps the building entirely. So as far as a parking breakdown, the proposed building, 7,105 square feet, zoning code requires one space per 100 square feet of floor area, and one space for each employee on the largest shift. That comes out to roughly 112 spaces. They're providing 145 spaces. In previous, obviously, applications, we try and get the provided spaces a little bit more closer to the minimum required, just to kind of reduce a lot of the impact on impervious surface and things like that. But I think the applicant makes some good points with kind of what we've seen with Texas Roadhouses in the past, how they're heavily trafficked. I think some extra parking would do this area pretty good, and leave some congestions in a pretty busy area. Here's a first look at the landscape plan. They utilize a lot of the pre-existing landscape, but also incorporate some new landscaping that'll keep the area looking good and a good neighbor for the surrounding properties. And finally, wall signage will follow the standards for a B2 zoning district. That's that basic standard is 1.5 square feet per linear foot of building frontage. Each sign will require its own zoning permit, which will be approved by myself once we're kind of ready to proceed with that step. So I think that covers everything. Staff is recommending approval of this submission, subject to the 13 conditions in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have of me. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our usual very comprehensive report, but you forgot something.
I did forget one thing. I would love to make a recommendation to amend the resolution. There's a little discrepancy with the site plan over a couple site plans, so I would love to amend the resolution to make sure that the approved square footage of the building is 7,105 square feet. I believe it was referenced as maybe 6,800 at the top of the resolution, so I'd just love to update that. Thank you so much.
Colin, before you, excuse us, Mr. Chairman, before you leave, since you're going to talk to us about making an amendment, in all tongue-in-cheek but at the same time seriousness, should not the plans reflect that this is in Beaver Creek and not in Fairborn? If they're gonna make the change of the plans, let's change the address to proper address?
Yeah, so the dress is actually correct. It is technically, it's in Beaver Creek, but for whatever reason, it has a Fairborn address.
It's a Fairborn zip code.
Yes, but it is within our jurisdiction.
So we are not outside of our jurisdiction on this property?
Certainly not, no.
Not gonna be in competition with Fairborn wanting to take our property?
No, sir. It's very confusing, but yeah, it was correct. We double-checked that.
Colin, before you sit down, what was that number of square feet again?
Yes, it's 7,105 square feet.
7,105. Make sure we change that. Since we have had our report, I will now open it to the public for any comments, questions for or against. Seeing a dearth of folks coming forward, I will ask if there was any written input?
No, there was not.
No written input. And since I promised Laura I wouldn't start with her, I'm gonna start on my left this time.
Question for staff. I'm sure this came up during the development of these elevations, but with the trash being towards, on the east side, so facing North Fairfield, do you foresee any issues with trash trucks getting around to that point there in the parking lot?
That's, it's a fair comment. We looked at that. I don't think there should be any issues with them traversing there. It was the most logical sense, and that will be enclosed as well, so it won't be an eyesore to the west there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colin, could you come back up? I have a similar question in the same spot. Could you put up the site plan? Because I'm a bit more feeling stronger than my compatriot here. That area, which is just in the southwest corner, I guess, along North Fairfield, that's Hardscape, and that's obviously where you're gonna be loading and unloading. So if I'm looking at the restaurant plan, the way it's laid out, the main entrance is in the east side of the property. That's the only way in and out for customers.
Correct.
The loading in and out is on the west side. So if you think of restaurants operationally, the customers are coming, and they're parking on the whole east side. You've got all the parking up front, you've only got one entrance, the handicap is there. That means the employees are gonna be parking in the back. So they're gonna be parking along North Fairfield. They can say they'll park somewhere else, but they're gonna be parking along North Fairfield.
Sure.
So now you've got that whole back row along North Fairfield lined with employee cars. You've got trucks coming in, and a fire breaks out. So when I look at the recommendation, I think it was number eight, when I talked about the fire department and the city engineers and sanitary are gonna sign off, I'm concerned, how could they sign off if they look at the use of the building in the way it will functionally be used, given the constraints of should a loading or unloading occur during operation, a fire breaks out, an emergency response truck won't be able to get back there? And have you guys, is this too soon to talk about it? Has the fire department weighed in at all in this site plan review process? Because I'm concerned that we are gonna be boxing our responders into not being able to get to the back.
It's not looking like I have a comment sheet from the fire department yet. We would need their approval prior to releasing the zoning permit.
How can we assure that that, I don't want to modify condition A because it's a standard condition?
Sure.
To make sure that they look at the operation during the afternoon and evening, because that Mrs. Hubert said that it's when it's gonna be operating, you're gonna have employees in the back, you're gonna have service trucks loading and unloading, because that's the only place.
Sure.
And all of a sudden, a fire breaks out. That's probably where the kitchen is. And I'm concerned that we are going to be taking away the space a fire truck needs.
Okay.
How do we get that message out without making it a requirement for the owner?
Sure. Yeah, I will certainly speak with Mr. Groschen regarding those concerns and make sure that those are addressed.
I do have one small one, thank you, Mr. Carful. I do have one small one for the representative, Ms. Hubert. Could you come back up? This is a small item, but I have not seen this in all the ones we've reviewed. So there's a number of veterans here in the counter, in the council, and it shows that you're gonna have special vet parking. I don't know where in the site plan it would be, but I'm wondering, how does that happen for those of us vets on this commission and others listening to the live audience now that would want to park in that spot or spots? How is that gonna work? I've not seen that before. How will you know that I'm a vet or not a vet?
Well, I think it's on the honor system, obviously, and I think it's a, that's a fair assumption to say that, you know, the veterans that would be parking there would, you know, utilize that parking and be able to park there. There's no one policing.
Okay, but it would not be one of the, one of the handicap spaces that would be earmarked for veterans as well? Good.
Yes, yes. It'll be, we would have the accessible parking, the veteran parking.
That's where I got the idea.
Both, not taking away from that.
I tried to find it on the map, and I thought, that's a great idea. How are they gonna make that happen? And anyway, thank you for humor.
I bet in this town, too, there'll be a lot, a lot of people taking advantage of the veteran parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question back for her.
Okay, go ahead.
Really quick, yeah, one question. I was looking at these documents, and I see 40 employees anticipated. Is that 40 employees at one time or total, like total staff?
I believe that's the maximum at one time.
Maximum at one time? Okay. Yeah, that's.
Well, that's why they've got 112 parking spaces. Okay, I'll turn to my vice chair.
Just one question, Colin. Was all the equipment ground-mounted in this case?
That, I'm not sure. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, it's on the roof.
So it will be screened, yeah.
Just, I guess I just had one comment about that, then. So like, I know the North Fairfield's very elevated right from the site, so anything we can do to make sure it is screened from, you know, on North Fairfield?
Certainly.
Being at a higher elevation?
Yep, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Now our newest member, I left her for last.
No questions.
Okay. Please explain to me what the crosshatch area is in the lower left-hand corner.
Sure, that's where the dumpster's going to go.
Okay, is that, is concrete, though?
Yes, correct.
As opposed to asphalt?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't quite tell what it is. Oh, there's a key. Look at that. My eyes are so bad, they couldn't see it. I presume this meets the percentage of pervious service, surface?
So they're slightly over, but we take that calculation for the entire PUD, and the entire PUD is under that 75% benchmark.
Okay. And I didn't see anything specific on signs. Are you, are they planning on having, and maybe Ms. Hubert, this may be a question for her, are they planning on having entry and exit-only signs to keep people from going backwards through there?
We would certainly probably want some wayfinding signs, yeah, certainly with just the layout of the site, we'd probably want some there, so.
Yeah, because the one in the middle is a gazalcha, and the other two are goesincha or goesoutcha both. So that's just a suggestion that.
Yeah, that's a good, great suggestion, yeah.
That needs to be done. Second helpings, gentlemen, Ms. Plumbow? Okay, if you don't, then I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to amend the resolution, striking 66, 86 square feet, and replacing that with 7105 square feet.
Okay.
Motion, a second. Second that motion?
Okay, I have a second on that, and we'll do that by acclamation. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, so we have passed the amendment. Colin, there was something that you wanted, was there a change to one of the conditions that you mentioned earlier? Just want to make sure we get that in there.
It was just the change of the square footage. It wasn't in the condition, so that was all I needed.
Great. Okay, so I have an amendment for the motion. Now I need.
Mr. Chair, do we need to add anything about your signage, or just let staff deal with that?
It's up to y'all.
Does staff have a preference on that? Okay, all right. In that case, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve PUD, what is this, 88-18, mod 825, with the attached 13 conditions as amended.
Okay, I have a motion?
A second that motion?
And I have a second.
Was there a motion for the amendment first with the?
Yeah, yeah. We passed that.
That was so quick, I missed it.
Fast movers. We did that, we did that by an a and a. We didn't do a roll call on it.
That works, that's how I missed it.
Okay. So we'll read the roll this time.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Plumbow?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, 5-0, and we're looking forward to the new building. What's your construction? When do you think you'll, once it's, presuming it's approved by council?
We're looking at, just after the first year, probably around March for the start. We already have building plans put there, but we have to go through zoning and housing permit process, demolition permit, the other stuff, so we're.
So for folks who are listening, they're hoping to get started next March. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, our second public hearing tonight is PC-25-7. It's an Azra for Tooties Bar and Grill.
This is case number PC 25-7, Azra detailed site plan, on an application filed by Pinnacle care of Mike Taylor, 480 Vantage Point, Miami'sburg, Ohio, 45342. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval in Azra for 0.6996 acres of land to construct a 1,350 square foot patio cover addition to the existing Tooties Bar and Grill. The property is located at 3982 Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 99, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume there's someone here representing?
I was going to do the presentation for both the applicant and ourselves, so.
Okay, excellent.
Once again, Melissa stated it perfectly. It's a 1,350 square foot patio addition to the existing Tooties Bar and Grill. They're located at 3982 Colonel Glenn Highway. This is an Azra that is kind of in the northwestern part of our city, that Southern Star's just indicating where we're here this evening. Here's a first look at the existing conditions of the lot. So as you can see, it is a very unique lot, and it is zoned, I believe, B2. So development for a lot like this is very, very difficult. It's challenging, which is kind of why we were pursuing the Azra route, because while it doesn't meet the black and white conditions of a B2 zoning district, we thought that the request was fair and worth hearing at the public, at a Planning Commission level. So that's kind of why we were pursuing an Azra here. As you can see, kind of that southeastern part of that building is an existing kind of concrete patio that's loosely used as kind of an outdoor eating area, but you'll see from the proposal this evening, they're really trying to revitalize that and make it a space that people can utilize outdoors. So here's a first look at that kind of conceptual of the proposal. You can see it's a covered patio. They're not expanding the footprint of what's existing, but what is existing is the patio kind of goes up into that property line. So meeting setback requirements was next to near impossible. Here's just an outline of the design, what is being proposed. It's a new roof with wood frame. They're utilizing columns with stick-on stone veneer. There's gonna be a decorative metal screen coming from the top to add a little kind of buffer there, but they're also trying to keep and maintain a lot of the existing elements of the building, the brick veneer on the main building, the glass storefront doors, and the existing railing system as well. So they're trying to keep a lot of the elements already, but just making it a more usable space. Here's just kind of an overlook of the site plan for that property. So that red area would be kind of that patio. It is not enclosed, and, yeah, like I said, that red area is kind of gonna be the concrete pad that'll be covered by the roof. As far as our analysis is concerned, so the B2 zoning requirements, 40-foot minimum front yard setback, and that setback, as you can see from kind of the site plan here, that setback is actually that kind of slanted line. That's where we kind of take that front setback from. It's not from that southern property line that you see, that's, that kind of goes out on the Colonel Glenn. We're taking that from that kind of slanted line to the east there. So that's why meeting that setback requirement was next to near impossible for any type of development, and that's why we're here for an Azra. So like I mentioned multiple times, lot shapes makes compliance impossible. It's not fully enclosed, so it's, if it was an enclosed addition, it might be a different conversation in our eyes, but since it's not fully enclosed, we thought that that was appropriate use of the space, and they're, you know, they're making an existing structure better use. So staff is gonna support applications similar to that. So we're recommending approval of this, the five conditions in the resolution. There was one note that I did want to talk about. They had a fireplace component that has since been removed. They are not proposing a fireplace anymore in conjunction with the patio. I did reach out to the township fire chief, Randy Groschen, on the conceptuals. They do have, I guess, kind of a couple fire open pits. That was kind of a red flag to staff, waiting to hear, with kind of the covered roof. Waiting to hear from Randy if that would be allowed, permitted, and if not, you know, that's a minor element of the overall proposal, so that's something that we can work with there, but still waiting to hear from Randy on whether or not that fire pit would be permitted. No, Randy Groschen, the Beaver Creek Township Fire Chief. But I believe our applicants are here in the crowd as well, so happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing, so if anyone here wishes to speak, for, against, or simply ask questions, now is your time to do it. for, against, or simply ask questions, now is your time to do it. I'm hearing deafening silence again. Did we have any written input?
We did not.
No written input, last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, get along with my folks here, and I'll start to my immediate left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colin, could you come back up just to close the loop on the kindness of raising the fire issues that we had?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to pull that string a little bit more, and maybe the people in the audience that they represent, Tooties, can answer. The open fire pits, what we call them, for the two that are there and shown in the drawing, would be an issue, especially in winter, if there is a hanging element to close from the wind. As you would see some places with outdoors, they have the, I don't want to say drapes or tapestry, but they're-
Yeah, I've certainly seen that, yep.
And there's nothing that mentions those enclosures, but I can't imagine a restaurant in the winter, in February, not having those, and yet they sell the open pit. So how do we kind of take yours, your kind remarks, one step further and say, we're looking at not only the open pit under the enclosure is treated properly, but just the notion of having them, because that's going to be an enclosed space in February, whether you like it or not?
Sure, and we would certainly welcome any kind of condition that planning commission would come up with. But I'm sure the applicants can speak more to their business plan and model as far as utilizing the space.
And what's the plans for the, and if the space is enclosed, the open pits, if the open pits go away, or the fire, they go away, then it doesn't really matter what we do, because the fire pits are the only issue.
Mike Taylor with Vice President, Pinnacle Architects, 480 Vantage Point, Miami'sburg. The bottom of the soffit is going to be a cement fiber board. We want it to be smooth, so it is, that's fire-resistant. But the wood framing, the rest of the building is all 5B construction combustible. So, yeah, we'll definitely work with the fire department if that's not allowed. As far as having any kind of roll-down screens, I don't-
Bed breakers or-
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
For February?
Dean would like that.
Thank you.
I have Dean Lea Keiko's here, he's the owner. But we were going to use the screen, it's a metal screen up there, that's just whatever really sun that would come. And that's kind of from, I don't know what direction. This is the most unique property I've ever worked on.
Yeah, see, the issue, Mr. Taylor, is there could be the potential in winter of an open flame in an enclosed space.
Yes, yes.
And it looks tremendous, because I drive by there a lot on the way to the base, and I'm telling you, that's going to be a tremendous improvement. But you have an open flame in an enclosed space, that's a lot of trouble.
If he would do, and we would recommend like a Mecca shade-type system, the actual face of the columns and that metal band is on this side of the glass railing. So it would come down on, we would have side channels for it to come down on, and it would be in front of the bottom rail, which is glass. So it will be able to be fixed in there. But, and it is Class A material, but again, if-
It's an enclosed space, or it could be in February.
If it is, yeah.
Mr. Taylor, as long as you're kind, come up, let me ask one related question. Prior to what Mr. Carville said about removal of the chimney.
Yes.
The documents that we had read said that the, obviously, the new construction is going to be a new roof. But the existing roof on the existing building was going to stay the same.
Yes.
And does that remain, the existing roof is not going to be touched? Even with the chimney gone, it's still not going to be touched?
Still not going to be touched. And we're trying to come in under the soffit with the new flat plane, metal, black metal canopy. He, just like a new, more elegant look, he's going to rename the bar. It's not going to be Tooties anymore, it's going to be 3.982 Kitchen &amp; Bar. And Dean will be presenting his new logo. But he has turned a couple of other bars in the region into really fun places to be. And he's very creative, and this will help him take the old stigma-
It's close enough to the base, you'll have a great lunch grog.
Definitely. And he's missing out on that, because he has the space, but we, no covering.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Thank you.
To my right, Vice Chair.
Question for Colin. So would we want to just put in a condition that says, like, all concerns of the fire department should be met or something like that?
Sure, that could help. I mean, as Randy kind of mentioned to me to the side, this will require a building permit from the county, and ultimately, they have to meet fire code to get approval for that. So we're covered a lot of different ways, but I'd certainly welcome a condition as well, if you see fit.
Okay, and then the other question is, so our packet says a new masonry fireplace will be constructed, right? But now we're saying it's not?
Yes, yeah, that literally just came in today. So, yeah, they disregarded that, so that is not included anymore.
Okay, so if we approve this, that wouldn't be included, so they could not then change their mind later and then give it since it's in our packet?
Correct, yeah, I know their, staff had some concerns with that as well. So, yeah, that would not be included as is.
Okay, alright, that's all the questions ahead.
Ms. Laura?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Alright.
Yeah, a question for staff. In the past, for cases on Colonel Glenn, like Valvoline, there's a pretty major office building that was being built across National.
Yeah.
We had a condition in there to work with the city, work with you guys on delivery times for heavy equipment, things like that, just with base traffic.
Sure.
Would this be a candidate for that? This doesn't seem as major as some of these other construction activities.
I don't think so. I don't think it would rise to that.
Okay, thank you.
My turn. Quick question. Since this new roof goes right up to the property line, the parcel next to it, when it develops, which it will eventually, I presume, what kind of a setback are we going to have to have from them?
So I believe that parcel is a Sonic, I believe, to the east, directly east. So I believe it is developed.
Okay, so it's unlikely that they're going to do any building near it?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good, that's good to know. Now, Tooties has been here a long, I remember eating there as a First Lieutenant, and that was a long time ago. Y'all had a fire there, too, and they rebuilt. So it's been a fixture in Beaver Creek since before Beaver Creek was a city, I know that. My suggestion, gentlemen, when we're talking about the fire pits and the fireplace and so forth, is to add a condition that would permit a fireplace, any, anything with a flame has to be in an open, in a fireplace. And that would preclude a fire pit. And just put that in there, and it still gives them the option to do it if they want to, without having to come back to us again. And it would have to be approved by fire code. Would that work?
Could you say that one more time?
Okay, adding a condition that says that any open fire in this area would have to be in a fireplace, not an open fire pit. And it would have to be approved by the fire department, fire code, however you want to put that.
Just externally vented to the outside.
Yeah.
I think fire code will cover us, because then we'd have to, what's the definition of a fire pit versus a fireplace kind of thing? So I think, do you think that through the approval process-
Yeah, I trust the approval process, definitely.
All I'm, the reason I'm saying that is simply to give them the option, if they decide before they start constructing, dang, I wish we had put that fireplace in. It'll give them the option to do that without having to come back here. That was my only, that was my suggestion about that, so. But up to the sense of planning commission, so.
The issue is the external venting of an inside-the-patio-area heating source.
Right.
Whatever heating source they use, open pit, fireplace, then it's externally vented, which they can't do if it's a fully enclosed, but a fireplace would do the deal.
But if you say that, then you would have to say that electric ceiling heaters or those propane ceiling heaters like they have at City Barbecue, you need to specify an open flame.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
But it's up to planning commission, you guys-
Melissa worded for us.
My opinion is if we do anything, just to say, you know, all concerns of the fire department shall be met prior to release of a building permit.
Yeah, I think-
Okay.
Alright, so I would make that motion, Mr. Chair, that all concerns of the fire department shall be met prior to release of the building permit.
Okay, so that would be-
That would be condition six?
Condition six. Melissa is typing away, so. And we need to vote on that, folks. I have a, okay?
I second that addition.
I have a second, and we'll do that by acclamation. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign, aye? Not, that was a for, not an against. So the amendment passes 5-0, and now I need a motion to approve the PUD, or sorry, the-
Motion to approve PC 25-7 Ezra for Tooties Bar &amp; Grill with the six attached conditions.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, and could be so good as to read the roll?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward, we're looking forward to the new construction there. Okay, folks, we are down to our third public hearing, PUD 25-3, specific site plan number one, 7 Brew. That, the applicant has requested that to be tabled till the October meeting, so I need a motion to table.
Mr. Chair, can we just table to indefinitely? And then, just in case they don't, you know, come back in October, we don't have to retable it?
There we go, okay, that's fine. I was just reading what's put in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, generally, if we table it one month, then we won't re-advertise. But once we get past a month, then we'll need to re-advertise. So it's fine, if they come back next month, then we don't have to re-advertise. If they table another month, then we probably will re-advertise. It's, there's not a whole lot of people to advertise out in that area, but we just want to make sure that you don't advertise something and then have it four months later. It doesn't do what it's supposed to do.
Okay.
So we're going to leave it alone?
I know, we're okay.
Do it for a month, or do it for-
No, you can do it, you can just say, table it indefinitely.
Okay, just want to make sure that I had it right.
Not sure why I'm speaking anyways, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move to table PUD 25-3, SSP number one, indefinitely.
A second to that.
I have a motion and a second, and let's read the roll for that.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. And we are down to the last item, which is a decision item dealing with PUD 93-6 mod 825. It's a minor modification, and it's Canterbury Trails buffer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a minor modification to the existing site plan. Amberwood is the name of the development. It was approved, I believe, in the summer of 2021. And construction then began in 2022. It's been a, it was a challenging site with a lot of grading, and a lot of vegetation to move around, to make the development work. Just for, get your bearings straight, it's up in the northeast corner of Beaver Creek. It's actually on the northeast side of hole number seven off the golf course. This is the site plan as it was originally approved in 2021, where you've got in the green area with the orange buildings, so that's the multifamily portion. And then you've got in the center of the project, a single-family residential with the yellow lots. Now, along the entire western property line, and it's kind of hard to see in this map, but there's a 25-foot area that's designated as a non, or I think it's no disturbance area, or non-disturbance area. And that's what brings us here this evening. As our city engineer was out doing inspection on one of the southern roads, kind of looked up the hill, and he noticed that there was one house where there was a patio that was kind of sticking further into the property than the rest of the houses. So we went out and took a look, and in fact, you could see a kind of superimposed what we measured out there. But some of the retaining wall and some of a concrete patio encroaches into that 25-foot non-disturbance area. And the patio is, it's a nice-looking patio. These were taken in the summer, while it was under construction. And there's still a lot going on, but it's a nice-looking structure. And so I'm trying to work with the property owner to try to find an amicable solution to this encroachment. And as I was going through the, what Bent Creek has, what Canterbury Trails has, or Woodlands at Canterbury Trails, and the other single-family neighborhoods in the area, you could see on the, on all the yellow lines that I have on there, it's actually labeled as a no-cut zone. And then the red is labeled as a non-disturbance area. And both reds were done by Fisher Homes. And the problem is, we don't have a definition for non-disturbance area in the zoning code. We have a definition for a no-cut zone, which basically states that you can get rid of scrub, you can get rid of weeds and brush and non-native species, but you can't get, you can't cut trees that are four inches or larger. We also have a woodland easement where basically it needs to stay as it remain, remain as it is. It needs to be a non, you don't touch it kind of area. We try to discourage those abutting residential neighborhoods, just because you get all that underbrush and poison ivy, and it can be an attractive nuisance for small animals and the like. And so, but reading the two definitions, I made the inference that, you know, a non-disturbance area is closer to a woodland easement, just based on the title that it is to a no-cut zone. So we're treating it as a woodland easement, which is what we're kind of not really for when it comes to next-to-residential neighborhoods. So I brought the idea of reclassifying the non-disturbance area to a no-cut zone to city council in the summer. And council was kind of, they were hesitant to go forward with that. They said if we're going to do that, it needs to be a major modification. We were pressed all the public hearings and the like. But when we talked to them about, rather than changing to a no-cut zone, rather allow a small encroachment into that non-disturbance area, modify the language in Amberwood's PUD, so this would be only applicable to Amberwood. It's not to every PUD, or not to every neighborhood in the city, where it allows a small encroachment of uncovered structures into that non-disturbance area. And they were more receptive to that idea and thought that that can be a minor modification rather than a major modification. And so that's why we're here this evening. What they're proposing, what we're proposing with this application in general is that allowing up to a five-foot encroachment only for uncovered patios and uncovered decks, so you can't have a Florida room, you can't have, you know, a covered patio or anything like that into the non-disturbance area. But have up to five-feet encroachment for uncovered patios or decks. And then also recognizing that when you put a deck next to a non-disturbance area, which is tantamount to a woodland easement, you need to have some clear area around it so you can maintain the deck and you don't have poison ivy growing onto your deck. So in addition to the five-foot encroachment for that, you allow up to a three-foot encroachment into a lawn. And so basically with the deck or patio and the lawn, it's an eight-foot encroachment into the area. Specifically to the applicant, because this is a deck that was, a patio that was already, the construction already begun. We want to try to claw back some of the area that was cleared. So I kind of showed it on this one here, where you can see, and it does, I just put five trees on the back. They don't necessarily have to be equidistant or placed there. It's just a representation that, you know, five trees be placed on the property between the golf course and this encroachment, and then re-wilding, I guess, is the term, for the other area of the property that was in the non-disturbance area that's not part of the maintenance lawn. So basically, they need to get a permit for the retaining wall. There's no permits required for a patio, but we do require them for decks. They have a patio. They have a patio, but we do also, we require a permit for a retaining wall. And so, they need to, within three months of approval, if this is approved here this evening, they'll need to get a permit for the retaining wall. But prior to us releasing that permit, they need to install either five deciduous trees or five evergreen trees along that back property line. And also, within three months, they need to rewild that area that's not part of the maintenance lawn. The applicant is here, and I'm not sure if they wanted to say anything, but I want to give them the opportunity if they'd like to speak. But we're recommending approval of this. I think it's a good compromise between having a woodland easement, which is, we try to discourage next to residential, because it does severely limit what a property owner can do. But this allows for some use of the backyard, or that's what otherwise are pretty shallow lots back there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have anything you would like to add? I'm sure we're gonna have some questions for you, but if you'd like to, to speak your piece, it may answer some of our questions ahead of time.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. So, Mr. Burkett did a phenomenal job explaining the situation. So, let me just kind of read a little bit of what we had prepared, and then I can answer any of the questions.
Sorry, could you, just for the record, could you identify yourself, we know who you are, but we need it for the record.
John Cherry, I'm, I'm, I'm the perp, lot fourteen.
Okay.
At Amberwood.
Okay.
So, so first of all, I want to make it clear that we never intended to do anything that was not in keeping with the planning or zoning commission's direction. Residents of Beaver Creek for thirty-five years, we, we kind of know the process pretty well. Our intent has always been to enhance both Amberwood's subdivision and our property, to create a backyard that's visually pleasing to golfers, has no impact on golf course operations, and increases the overall property values of Amberwood. We are very sorry for the issues this matter has caused, however, we truly believe we are aligning our property enhancements with the setback buffer requirements as we understood them, especially since there wasn't a zoning code definition for no disturbance area. It seems to be open to interpretation of, you know, what that actually means. Mr. Burkett has, has thrown up there some, some trees on there. What I would like to do is, I would like to offer that, in, in selecting lot fourteen, my wife and I went out there and, and we actually videotaped fifteen, fourteen, and thirteen, the three sixty pan, just to see what it would look like before we even built on there. So, I have a three hundred and sixty-degree pan of that area, and no trees were touched. City council had some heartburn saying we had cleared the area. The only thing that we've done is taken out poison ivy, as Mr. Burkett mentioned, honeysuckle, you know, there are invasive, I think they call it oriental bittersweet, and I really would encourage Beaver Creek to get some sort of, you know, tree commissioner, some arborist out there to look. Because the intent is to preserve that area, and what you're doing by making this no disturbance area is you're allowing that to just take root and kill all those trees right there. You can look and see that they're all covered with these vines, and they're dead. So, back to my point, while we did not take any of the trees down, we're willing to plant the trees as, you know, as, as mentioned. We do have a permit in the system with the builder of, of our patio, and I think it's waiting approval of this board's decision on whether to go forward with the permit. The, the company that did it has got a forty-year track record in Beaver Creek and surrounding areas, so I can tell you, it's a, it's a fine job, you know, payers by design, just a phenomenal organization. I think that's probably all I wanted to, to mention, although I will echo and footstomp Mr. Burkett's comments about, you know, the degradation of a no disturbance zone around residential properties. You can see back there that it's, it's really not what I, as a golfer, you know, envisioned. You know, I just retired after thirty-three years in the Air Force, this was the house that, that we built, this was our dream home, on the golf course. We paid a premium to have a golf course lot through Fisher, and I think that's counterintuitive to have a golf course lot on, on number seven, and not be able to see the golf course. So, if you stand on either property and look back, you won't like what you see. You stand on my property, it's very pleasing, both directions. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
Yeah, Randy.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just some random questions, I guess. So, was there notice given for this hearing? Because?
Right, it's not a public hearing, so it didn't require notification.
Okay, as you know, when council heard it, what, in July or something like that, there was a few people there who?
Yeah, yeah, there was a, there was a few public inputs, because there was public opportunity at those.
Okay. And then, just from my ignorance, why, why not BZA for this? Like, couldn't they?
Uh, it was a, it was a, it's not a boilerplate condition, it was something that was established by planning commission and city council as part of the PUD process. I really felt that if we're gonna allow a slight modification of a PUD condition established by planning commission, city council, then it should be at least modified by planning commission.
It, sorry, I guess.
So, I, I don't want to call it a variance, because we're, we're looking to do it not just for this property, but allow that encroachment for all the, the property.
So, I guess my question then is, why not a variance, and why do, do it this way instead?
Well, a variance, it's gonna be property-specific, so that means everybody that wanted to do it have to apply for a variance that way. And those are public hearings and require a lot more, I guess, application lead time, I mean, they're a lot harder to do. And so, we wanted, really, it's a, it's a, it's a way to try to fix what is in a woodland easement, because it's not title, it's not named right, I guess.
I, I guess I see that a little bit, but then at the same time, we're allowing stuff to go into that, that's where I have a problem with this. And so, we, you know, every time we hear a development, right, we have packed room of people here, you know, with very strong, you know, concerns about things. And then, now to come back later and then modify those conditions, that gives me, I don't know, a little anxiety or heartburn, because, I mean.
No, I, I understand, and it's, it's kind of an odd situation, because if you look, like I say, if you look at the, this map here, and it shows like, just on the same golf, same hole, just on the other side of the hole, that's a no-cut zone. And so, I was trying, the, the intent for me to do the, originally, to think that we can just reclassify it as a no-cut zone, I'm just trying to create a like, a like situation, you know, level the playing field. But at the same time, trying not to get an entire room full of people worked up on, on a, on a no-cut zone. Well, what is, is a green, what is, is a woodland easement, but trying to reclassify it so that it matches what, what Bent Creek has, and what Woodlands at Canterbury Trails has.
But in their HOA, right, it's more similar to what is in the PUD, right?
That's correct, but that's, that can be changed by the HOA at any time, so I'm trying to, trying to get it closer to where we're, we're enforcing the same rules on both sides of the hole. And this kind of gets it towards that direction.
Yeah, and then how does, how would this compare then to all the other PUDs that we've done recently for developments?
I don't have, I don't have woodland easement in any of them. I specifically, like, for Bridlewood, I specifically, they, they accidentally put woodland easement on the concept plan, and it had already been shared with the neighbors, and I pulled that back at the rezoning, so we need to reclassify that as a no-cut zone, because woodland easements just don't belong in a single-family neighborhood, because of, because of the poison ivy and the cuts, I don't think it's Cudzu, but the Virginia creeper, whatever. What is it, the cottonwood, the vines that grow everywhere really fast, Virginia creeper. And with Wrightwood, that we just took here last, last month, it's a no-cut zone with Turner that we did last year, that's a no-cut zone. So, I'm really, really wanting to pull away from any kind of woodland easement next to a single-family residential, I just, I just don't think that it, it's a good mix.
And then, refresh my memory, so on those ones, could they build something in that?
Yeah, yeah, because in a no-cut zone, in the definition of no-cut zone, it says you can have passive or active recreation if you're not taking down a tree that's four foot, or four inches or, or larger. So, you can have landscaping, fencing, you can have sheds, as long as it's not, you're not having to take down the four-inch tree or larger to do it. So, but on a woodland easement, you can't do anything. It's just basically wild, untamed area behind your house.
Alright, yeah, I guess I just have concerns about changing it now, after the fact.
Yeah, and this, this is one of those ones where I pushed that around in my head for a month before I brought it even to City Council on, on what best to do. And it wasn't, there, there's no easy choice on this one.
Alright, thank you.
Next?
No questions.
Okay, I'll go to my far left.
I don't have any questions.
I bet you do.
Oh, yes. Hey, you'll be up there for a while, Randy.
That's fine.
In the packet, for those of you in the audience on TV, this is one of the diagrams we got. Is this able to be called up on the screen?
I believe I have it right there.
Well, there it is, okay. So, Steve, I'm gonna ask Randy to repeat the question, because I'm gonna go off the mic for a second, I need to get closer to the screen.
So, in all the documentation, it shows that he went into the twenty-five-foot area, and then some into city property? So, that's twenty-five foot plus city property, or this is city property?
When we looked at, looked at the numbers, or looked at the, what was happening, that's? Yeah, you were just asking, did he encroach into the city property? My?
So, if this is the twenty-five foot, which clearly what it was in law, it is just a city property.
That is city property, and? It appeared that, yeah, some of the, some of that area was cleared as well. Now, we didn't survey the property, we didn't have the property survey when we went out and looked and measured. We want to, would want to clarify what was done on the city property, but talking with the golf course people, they didn't have a problem with what was going on, but, but at the same time, we can't.
Well, it looks great, but?
We can't have the, the Rock Creek or whatever on city property, I mean.
So, so here's my concern, can you go back, oh, to that one right there? So, the retaining wall, as I'm, I'm purposely summarizing this, and this is just a suggestion, I know how hard you and Colin and Melissa are overburdened already by us, but when an item comes to us from the council, especially with our, our new member Laura today, it would really help us if you gave us the dates when it was at the council, so we can look up the meeting minutes. Now, I only know, because as you know, I've been to all the council meetings, as Jonathan has, and I've sat through all this. So, I called up the June sixteenth minutes, the July, the June twenty-third minutes, the July sixteenth minutes, excuse me, July, July fourteenth minutes. And I reread, plus I sat in the room when Mr. and Mrs. Cherry were here, and I've seen all this already, but to the audience and to others here, they may not have. This is something that's gone from, as you correctly pointed out, from major modification to minor modification, now it's back to us. And I'm unclear, in a legal term, Mr. Longsbury, what precedent, excuse me, what preference we can do if a bigger issue has not been resolved first. And that's where I'm going with my question. If this retaining wall was in the twenty-five-foot area, how much ballpark, because we didn't have it surveyed, as you said, how much additional did their developed area, clearing area, whatever, go into our property, the city property? Two feet, three feet?
Yeah, I would have to measure, but I mean, we can make a boilerplate condition that says any, any?
Well, I'm just trying to get a ballpark, was it three feet, thirteen feet, twenty feet? How much passed?
I don't, I don't think it was, it was much if, if, I mean, you're talking five feet.
Yeah, so it's, it's just a couple of feet. But it reinforces, having sat through all the meetings, as the Cherries did, and you did, and I did, the, the June two meetings, the July meeting, of just how much this is an issue of someone coming into an area, even if they did the tremendous work, that it looks tremendous, and they did it without a permit, but okay, so the permit's in process now. But they went into an area that they shouldn't have, and they not only went into an area they shouldn't have, they went into an area that's city-owned. So, now, I'm torn, as Commissioner Garcia, or Councilwoman Garcia was, Councilwoman Schwartz was, Vice Mayor Bell was, I'm torn having sat through all these meetings and seeing, how do we address an issue that involves making city land to their betterment, the Cherries, when the permit issue that we might rule on, or rule on whether it's a minor modification, is so far into the future, because we haven't yet resolved what to happen to the city land?
So, I'll just say that.
And I know you've been at those meetings too, because I saw.
There's nothing that you guys could do to allow someone to build on a city property. There's no BZA variance requests that could come to allow you to build on, that is our property, and there is no legal right to build on city-owned property by anyone other than the city, or someone, the city gives specific permission to do that, which I can't envision that ever happening. So, I mean, regardless of what happened at council, regardless of what happened here, they were gonna have to remove anything that they had done on city property. And this happens from time to time, when people, you know, put out a playground into city property, when they don't realize where their property line stops, and when they don't, they, they just gotta move it, it's not their property.
Yeah, we, we've, we removed, like you said, playgrounds, we've removed gardens, we've removed hunting blinds, two times.
And that would be, that would be what I would expect, however, for our purposes of what we have the purview to do today, as, as we were mentioning, in the conditions, the well-written conditions for going forward, if, should this be approved, none of it addresses the reconciliation and putting back to its prior state, the city-owned property that they made betterment of.
Yeah.
All we talked about was the non, I can't remember the term, you know, it's a better.
Non-disturbance area.
Yeah. All we talked about was the non-disturbance. Now, I only know that because I looked at all the meeting minutes that Ms. Haynes developed for the June sixteenth, June twenty-third, July fourteenth, I read them all, and nothing talks about the city land. So, to me, hence where I started, how can we go forward as a planning commission to make any decision on this quote, "minor modification" that was given to us, if we haven't first resolved, possibly through just another resolution, if not through city council, to put the city property back to its state first, then it comes to the planning commission for a permit issue?
There is nothing that requires planning commission, BZA, the, the city has the right without any, to have its property changed back to the way it was to begin with.
I see that as an administrative action.
So, we're not, we're not in a sequential state of, can't do anything till after, okay?
Right, that's more of an administrative function between the golf course and the parks, and working with the property.
That was, that was my main concern, are we, I don't want to say out of step, but out of sequence for what should be happening?
What you're deciding will only affect what happens within the PUD. That land, that city-owned property is not part of the PUD.
It may be, but not subject to the PUD.
Yeah, certainly not, it's part of the golf course.
So, then, going back to this helpful diagram you have, and again, this stuff that they, that the Cherries did is outstanding, it looks great, it's just not in their area that they had the right to do it. So, now I'm trying to verify, what we're talking about today for the planning commission is what's going on in the twenty-five-foot area only, correct?
And only the first eight feet of it.
And only the, well, then?
Five-foot encroachment, and then a five-foot. For the, this property in particular, there'll be some rewilding, but really, the, the, the PUD modification is for Amberwood in general. So, any of the houses along that property line?
So, going back to the recommendation, the recommendations, excuse me, the resolution conditions that we have, do we need to direct a recommendation specifically to the future HOA, so that what the Cherries would possibly be permitted to have done is not replicated in future twenty-five-foot areas?
I plan on taking whatever you guys decide tonight to the HOA.
So, us adding a resolution to the HOA is viable, the future?
Well, no, I'm just letting them know what's, that there was a modification, if you pass it, there was an amendment, a modification to the site plan. And that modification is an allowance of encroachment into the non-disturbance area.
Maybe that's where I end up, is making it HOA recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Don't run off. Building on what you said, the, it, it seems to me, if whatever we pass tonight, the HOA could not make any looser, but they could tighten.
Oh, yeah.
They could, basically, the HOA could, could go into. They could, basically, the HOA could, could go into more detail and define this term that, that we won't use again.
Or we'll put it in the news, the next time we do the zoning code.
Right. But it still wouldn't, it would, whatever the HOA came up with, would still be, would be grandfathered if, if we came up with a definition that didn't match theirs.
Yeah. I mean, they, we don't enforce HOA regulations, because that's basically an agreement between two private property owners. But, and there's a lot of cases, I mean, we don't, that, in neighborhoods all throughout the city, where we have general conditions, and then they come in and say, well, your house has to be...
Right. They tighten them up.
All mailboxes have to be blue. I mean, we don't, we wouldn't put that, but the HOA might. So that's not, we wouldn't enforce the blue mailboxes. But that's HOA, if they want to, that's up to them.
I seem to recall a, a similar kerfuffle on, along Willow Run, a number of years ago.
Yeah, the...
Where there were a bunch of dead trees back there, and they couldn't cut them down because they would be, it was a no-cut zone. And we, we changed the definitions at that time to allow them to cut dead trees down.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, because I was out, having to go out there every day and say, yep, that one's dead.
Yep.
Yeah, that one's dead.
I, I remember that.
Became the fodder between two neighbors.
We went through this long discussion on that. Now, the, could you put the, the aerial up of, okay, no, no, no. You, you had it to begin with, that one. The dotted red line is the edge of the non-disturbance area, but it is still part of the Cherry's lot.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay. The line where the, where the, the putative trees are, is the actual lot line between their property and the city.
Right.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, that I had that right. So, the only, the only little bit of heartburn I have here is that it's, it was a case of the owners just didn't check before they started swinging the machete. And I don't like to, I'm not big on, even though I was Air Force Two, and know about asking for forgiveness rather than permission. And I, I don't want to make this look like it's something that we would do on a regular basis. And we've already made it very clear that this would apply only to this one development, and not in general. So...
And that was, that's kind of also the intent of the rewilding condition?
Correct. Correct.
The trees back there, to make sure that...
And I would presume, though, that the, whatever was, whatever was cut on city property, that will be part of the, of the replanting.
The golf course, or whatever they require, they'll require.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay.
I, I try to stay out of the golf courses world.
Oh, absolutely. That, that's very smart. You, you don't want to get between you and golfers.
No.
Any further questions? Any further helpings, gentlemen? Yes.
Yeah. Going back to possible, at least one, if not possibly two, recommendations. If I understand amber wood correctly, as with typical HOAs, a certain percentage of the homes have to be sold before the HOA is formed, and the Cherries have the benefit of being one of the early ones, pre-HOA? That would be correct?
I'm not sure. It's the status.
I don't think amber wood has, has an HOA yet. Oh, they do?
It's run by Fisher Development, right?
Oh, well, yeah, that would be typical, yeah.
Typically, a developer will run it until they are ready to leave the property.
So can we, with an HO, and I understand what Mr. Cherry just said, because that's common with any development. Until you sell a certain number of homes, you don't turn over the operation of the community of the HOA to the residents. But if that be true, could we write a recommendation that would bind Fisher Development?
I don't think we could, we could require Fisher to do anything without Fisher being here to answer it. But if you do...
If we're talking about something to prevent this going forward, so that the Cherries are the only ones that will have this, should it go ahead, we can't say "and nevermore," because we'll write an HOA requirement, if the HOA can't be held accountable, because it's run by the developer.
The intent here is not, is to allow that five-foot enclosure for anybody along that property.
Is to, or is not?
Is, is to.
If approved, the precedent would be set.
That's why it's a minor mod rather than a variance.
A variance would be property-specific. Minor is changing the parameters of the PUD.
This would allow every property owner to do what they've, what they've done essentially. The HOA could eventually put stricter requirements. They couldn't put looser requirements than what we are having in the, in the PUD.
So your five-foot and three-foot is a reflection of what could happen on all the adjoining lots along hole seven, golf hole seven, but not, in effect, go into the city golf course area?
Oh, no, yeah, no. It doesn't, we would never get permission for anybody to do anything on the city property.
Okay.
For example...
Hence, do we need a second recommendation to make sure that the Cherry's put back to its current, or prior state? I didn't catch it.
The, the golf course, I mean, they'll, they'll, are going to work with Cherry's on making sure that permits are made on city property.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing that, that, the, the Cherries would have to correct is, is the, the trees replanting some of the wild vegetation on their property.
On their property.
Not any, not touching the golf course.
As, as it pertains to this case here.
Yeah.
But the golf course, and whatever, the golf course, and then, that's more of an administrative function that planning commission or city council really doesn't get into.
We're only looking at their property.
Right.
For example, if, once the, once the amber wood HOA gets, gets up and running by the, by the property owners, they could, for example, allow property owners to clear poison ivy and vines and non-native species, which would be the honeysuckle, that Asian honeysuckle, without, without violating the HOA. And it would not violate what we are, what we have put in, because we have no definition of the, the specifics of what a non-disturbance area is. Am I, am I correct on that?
That's correct. Yeah. Officially, I don't have a definition for it.
That's why we, that's why it would be a good idea to leave this and, as it is, and then let the HOA fill in the details.
So...
It's like an AFR versus a, a Madgecom reg.
I'm not understanding.
Been there, done that.
I have no idea what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still trying to clarify here. In the recommendations, it does not address the city-owned property. And I know a moment ago, earlier, Mr. Burkett, you said that's something between them and the city golf course?
Yeah, that's an administrative thing.
So it's not something you think that by putting a recommendation in here, and us requiring them to resolve, we're just going to leave it up to them working with the golf course?
Yeah, because, I mean, if you did put it in, then you're putting a condition that requires me, as the planning department, to try to enforce something on another department in the city. And that's more of the role of the city manager rather than planning commission.
Well, it begs, what I started all this with 20 minutes ago, I'm trying to make sure that no one goes onto city property again. And I see nothing that prevents anyone, lot 13, or lot 15, or any of the lots, long hole seven, from saying, well, the Cherry's got away with it, I can get away with it. I'll just talk to my friends at the golf course.
Any, anytime somebody encroaches on somebody else's property, that's a wrong that they have to make, make right through legal entities, not necessarily our commission.
But we're burdening the city.
It'd be akin to them putting the, their patio onto their neighbor's property. We wouldn't address that in a minor modification.
Well, not, not in a planning commission, but are we, by not addressing it, at least a recommendation?
No.
Burdening adjoining lot orders by saying, okay, they'll just work it out with the golf course, because they'll probably try to do it too.
Because they're not, they're not supposed to be on golf course property in the first place.
Like I mentioned, this has happened multiple times throughout the city, throughout the years. And whenever someone encroaches on the city property, we, we don't need to come before you, we don't need to come before anyone. We have an independent legal right to tell them, get off of my land, restore it to the way it was before. Just as if someone had built something on your property.
That is not happening in this case, as far as we know already.
Well, we put a hold on until, we wanted to see what, how this, this progresses before we take action.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing it.
Okay. As Clint Eastwood said, get off of my yard. Okay. Any help, any further helpings, folks?
Just, just one more, Andy.
Sure.
So, just taking bridal wood as an example. So could they build more than three feet into, sorry, five feet, like a patio or a deck?
No, the patio deck can only encroach up to five feet.
Sorry, I'm, like, in bridal wood, as an example, right?
Oh, this is only for this plat?
I know.
Well, bridal, I mean, that would be specific, because it's a no-cut zone, if they don't have trees.
If there wasn't trees.
If there weren't any trees, it was just scrub, then they could build up to, I mean, a patio can go all the way up to the property line. On a R1A, you can build a patio right up to your property line, if there's no intervening, no-cut zone, or no, non-disturbance area, or woodland easement, or green space easement, or whatever any other many names you can call it. And in an older neighborhood that doesn't have these kind of protections, you can put your patio right up on the property line. At bridal wood, you can do that if you're not taking out a four-foot, four-inch or thicker tree. Like, if you live on a grassy lot that has no woods, you can patio right up to your property line.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to get a comparison of what we, what this would change to versus what others that we've done recently.
Well, when we rewickered, when we, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory serves, my memory serves me, when we redid the no-cut zone portion of the zoning code, after all the, all the dead trees that you were having to go out and look at.
Yeah.
The point was to keep either the developer or property owners from cutting trees along old fence lines, because that's where they generally occur.
Yeah, the big mature trees that we're trying to protect.
Exactly. And we, the developers were, were sometimes the bad actors. They would come in, and it was so much easier to bulldoze everything than to try to work around the trees. And that was as much for them as it was for the property owners, and particularly if it was, if it was adjacent to an existing plat. And the folks are used to seeing all those nice big trees just outside their reach, on the other side of their property line, and they didn't want them cut down either. So that was the point of the, and, and we learned our lesson about the undergrowth and the, the Virginia creeper and the poison ivy. And that's why, one of the reasons that this was rewritten. And that, that's the whole point of a no-cut zone.
And, and we could, when we redo the zoning code, we could lump non-disturbance area into no-cut zone, rather than lopping it into woodland easement. And that'll be up to planning commission and city council to define. Probably would be my recommendation at the time, is to allow maintenance of, but that's, that's for another day. I don't want to confuse the issue here. But eventually, we'll have a definition of non-disturbance area.
Yeah. Yeah, no thanks. I'm, again, I'm just torn between whether this should go to, like, BZA and just be a one-off versus make the change for every property.
I could say that, as an area variance, this would not fly in front of the BZA, because then you'd have to establish that there was something unique about that particular property, aside from the other ones that would make it so that they had to have a variance in order to do what they wanted to do. And I just don't see that ever, that would never meet the requirements for a variance. So the only way that this can be addressed is this way.
Yeah. BZA is a lot more boxed in with the rules and regulations, because they're quasi, they're being a quasi, I can't say that word, quasi judicial board. Right. Whereas planning commission has more flexibility on modifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, she...
Oh, I just wanted to verify. Yes. Thank you. Cindy Cherry, thank you. I just wanted to verify with Randy, this only affects seven homes, right? Seven or eight homes? The whole? Yeah. It's very few of us.
Well, it's just the ones on that one side?
No. Well, it'd be the ones, it's the ones on the left, the ones on the west side of the neighborhood. Really, the, the non-disturbance area stops, I believe, I can't use the pointer, but it stops at that crossroad. It's just the seven lots...
So it's just the beginning, that, in upper left corner there, actually, the lot nearest to the...
The orange building, and then...
Goes down to the, the wide angle turn.
Right. It's not a whole lot.
Okay. So it's just the...
That's correct.
That was me. My mic was off. So it, it's just the, the ones that, that face...
Well, all the way down the...
Oh, all the way down to the connecting street?
Yeah, I guess the dog's leg, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it, I think I see. So there, there's no, well, I guess there wouldn't be on the other side, would there? Because that's...
No, those have a 100-foot buffer because of the power lines on that side.
Right. Okay. Okay, got it. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, folks.
We need a recommendation.
We need a motion.
Let's have a, have a condition on HOA, and bargaining.
Do we need to put a condition in there, getting the HOA involved, or not?
I mean, I'm going to send this to the HOA. If you want to add a condition, then I'd send it to the HOA.
Okay.
But I plan on doing it, because it's a lot easier for me to get out in front of it than react to it later.
Sure. Okay. Well, then we'll need a ninth condition.
The, the planning, the HOA shall be informed of the decision of planning commission?
Informed and, and an explanation, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that, I mean, if you guys...
Such would include the meeting minutes from today?
Whatever, whatever...
Whenever it's ready, yeah. I mean, yeah, I know, I know amber wood people pretty well, so.
So if, if somebody will make that as a, as a motion for a new condition, before we vote on the minor mod?
For Melissa's benefit. So I, this would be condition number nine, that said decision by planning commission shall be made known to the HOA of Amberwood?
I was just going to say that HOA, I just reversed the words, but the, the Amberwood Homeowners Association shall be notified of the decision of planning commission as it pertains to this case.
That this decision relates to only this case?
Yeah, this case.
This case, yeah. I mean, this minor mod.
Yeah.
What he said.
I would make a motion for how Randy phrased it, if Melissa, if you caught it.
I'll, I'll give you the verdict.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second that. Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I'll, I'll withdraw. I'll withdraw that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on...
Condition nine.
Condition number nine. And I will, I'm sorry? Yes. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Carries for, for one. Now, I will ask for a motion to approve the minor mod with the now nine conditions.
Motion to approve PUD 93-6, minor mod, camp area trails buffer with the nine attached conditions.
And a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion and a second. Let's read the roll call on that.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
No.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for one. And gentlemen, and Ms. Palumbo, we are fresh out of items from the agenda, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, and we'll do that by general acclamation. Thank you very much.
I agree.
See you in October. Motion, our meeting is adjourned.